Huh? Okay, guys. Okay, okay, guys. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Ixani City Council Goal Setting Work Session for Tuesday, January nineteenth. The facilitator for this will be Ms. Wood, our city administrator. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Let's move on to the items and Ms. Wood, take her away.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. So I'd like to just start off by reviewing the purpose of our goal setting session. It's been the city council's practice to conduct an annual goal setting session to balance a workload and demand with available resources. The purpose of this session is to develop a consensus and determine top priorities for two thousand twenty-one and also that go beyond two thousand twenty-one, which helps us with budgeting, capital improvement projects, and et cetera, other things. It also gives us a work plan for staff that helps us to determine if there's other staff needed in areas, so we will review that as well. To assist with the prioritization, staff has assembled some items to be reviewed. I've asked council for items, so we'll go through those. Some of those have costs associated with them and some do not. And we're looking for ultimately direction from council if we should pursue or not pursue. Included in with your packet as memo letter E, this is some of our current approved plans that councils approved and ongoing plans. Some of these have been updated. Some of these don't get updated because we've integrated them into the capital improvements plan. There is that list there, though. Again, on memo E, if you have any questions or concerns about those, please do reach out to myself and I can either share the whole plan with you or just give you a summary. Going on to F, these were the two thousand twenty goals and progress summary. I'll let you review those on your own leisure. Please let me know, though, if you do have questions or concerns on where we are at. Some of these are still in progress. Some of these have been slated into years of where it worked within our capital improvement plan. So please do review these and if you haven't already, and then let me know. Letter G memo, these are the top bucket items that are within our CIP major projects slated for years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And I'll roughly go through these. Do know, though, that these projects, even though they are, for lack of a better term, I'll say earmarked within our capital improvement plans for these projects, nothing's been formally approved by council to make that happen as we move forward with, say, for example, bidding processes and things like that. But what we do have slated within the CIP is the performance amphitheater at Bluebird Park for this year, restrooms that will accompany for when we have a splash park this year. The splash pad is slated for twenty-three. Then we have some street projects. You'll see that some of those street projects have an asterisk and they have an arrow moving them down one year potentially. This is because we've been accustomed to getting our state aid funding for our street projects a year in advancement because of the state's uncertainty and things that are going on. We're not sure if we're getting those, so it's very likely that street projects will all just slide back a year so we can utilize state funding. We have some other pavement management projects in here that'll be going to council for discussion but plan for twenty-one. Then within water, we have rebuilding of our pump, wellhouse number two for this year. Then we have our water meter scheduled replacements for our infrastructure to get those to go remote and also replacing the radios on people's residence meters. That's to happen in twenty-two. We have a major project going on for the water tower, which is a recoding in twenty-three. That was pushed back to that year because once we did a full inspection of the water tower, found out that it was in better condition than we had thought. So that was money well spent to get that all cleaned out, fully inspected, to give us that revised date. Then we have our stormwater projects. We have slated for this year. That was that long running of storm management outline project that we had five years, basically, with the exception of when Mr. Cook spoke about our Rome County Road twenty-three, which is the county's ditch. We need them to do some work before we do ours, otherwise it will, our culverts will just get filled again. Any questions on our major items in our CIP list here? The full list of all CIP items were within your budget packet that we had back in December. This is just, like I said, the snapshot of large. Then we go to the city organizational charge. The organizational chart is very helpful. I do ask that council review this and we approve this, any kind of modifications that we have for staffing. In our finance department, we are not anticipating any staffing for quite some time. Engineering is the same. Public works, we do have that our full-time. Currently, we have a utility lead assignment, who's our tech two, one of our tech two people. We are recommending in twenty-three that that turn into a full-time position just for the overall integrity of both of those water and wastewater treatment facilities. Parks, we are not anticipating any additions to that position. Police, we do have our CSO position going to full-time in two thousand twenty-two. And then we are adding in an officer, which is based on the capacity of population in two thousand twenty-four. Liquor store, we will have some additions there. And green will be this year because we have planned for the new liquor store and it will take a few more part-time staff. Mike has worked with John on this and to ensure and hope that everything goes smoothly with just having part-time liquor store, which is a great cost savings to the city versus full-time staff that have all the added benefits that go along with that. Human resources, city clerk, other admin positions, and community development also are sufficient in their staffing needs for quite some time, so we do not anticipate adding any more there. Any questions on our organization and staffing plan? I'll move on to memo I. This, I won't go over right now, but this is for you to review if you haven't already. These are culmination of our two thousand five to two thousand nineteen council established goals in summary. So you can see we have, going all the way back, I think I couldn't find twenty sixteen, or two thousand six, excuse me, but otherwise you'll see that those were the goals that council had designated in the past years. Now, moving on to memo J, this is where I have put together items that council has brought forward and shared with me as well as city staff has some in here and looking for direction. So we'll start with number one, and then if you have any other ones that aren't in here, we will discuss those at the end. Holiday lighting display and community involvement. This was received by a council member. There are many cities that have lighting displays. Bluebird Park would potentially make a great location. We've had, I've asked Mr. Sylvester to look into cost to that. There are opportunities to have collaborations with other organizations within the area, like perhaps a Lions Rotary Club, things like that. But looking to see if this is something that the city council would like staff to pursue further.
I don't think it's any surprise, I've been after this for many years. Was that pretty long?
I've been after this for many years. It's, it was brought up, I don't know, probably four years ago when I had a wild hair that we should do something like Bentleyville and Bluebird Park. And it says, oh, great, yeah, as soon as we get a hotel. And this was previous council and mayor. Got the hotel and I brought it up again and he said it'll never work, and that was the end of it. Mayor Johnson got on Park and Rec. And I lit a fire under him on this. And Jeff has done a lot of research. He went and talked to the guy at Bentleyville. We, he'd give us the lights. And he said that we would feed off each other and it'd be huge. People drive, people drive from Iowa to go up to Bentleyville. And they spend the night, spend the weekend. You know, you get that coming up here. The hotel would be foolish not to step in and step into part of this, lights in the park. I don't know if some of you have been to Bentleyville, but Bentleyville's all done, ninety percent of that's done off of volunteers and donations. And they have different donation levels. I know, I'm sure, pretty sure that Walmart, Cub, Menards, Colburns, the Best Western, I think they'd all jump in on board on this thing. And I mean, this is something for the community. And it's, these pictures that Ms. Wood has on here came from, what was the name of that place?
Sam's Christmas Village.
Yeah, Sam's Christmas Village. I sent them to her. And there was, there was lines, it took literally three hours to get into park, to get in there. Then once you got parked, then you had to wait to get in line to go down this, this tunnel. I mean, I'm not, by any means am I saying this is something that we should throw three hundred thousand dollars in tomorrow. I mean, this is, it's all got to be built, you know? But Mayor Johnson can elaborate more on some of these lights and, because he did a lot of that research. And that's all on him.
I did talk to the guy that runs Bentleyville and he was willing to give us, all these are iron casted, everything that is made. And they switch out theirs every other year. So every two years they get something new and they switch out, and he was willing to give us what they weren't using. Lights included, so it'd be the iron cast, the lights, he'd give it to us. I did speak to the Lions Club. The Lions Club was willing to volunteer their services at it. I think we, we could mirror what Bentleyville is doing, where ninety percent of it would be donations or volunteer. The only thing that we're going to have to cover is, I will say going to, and Ms. Wood could vouch on this or Councilman Lundin, because we all three went to Sam's Christmas Village. There was no police presence at Sam's Christmas Village and I, I thought it was a cluster because of it. But they didn't have any. They had volunteers that.
Because that's a private.
And it is private. It was a, you know, private property that all this was put on, but it didn't deter anybody because that place was packed. Especially in a, a year like we've had. Like everybody wanted to get out and do something.
So is this something that you drive through?
No, this is walk.
This was you walked, you, you.
I know Bentleyville, you drive, drive through.
Now you do, but before you used to walk.
Used to walk it all.
But because of the year, they drove through. Ours would have, I mean, I would think ours would be better as a walk-through. That's what Bentleyville is, that's what Sam's Christmas Village was. Because of the pandemic is why Bentleyville switched to the drive-through. Sam's, Sam's Christmas Village was still a walk-through.
So would you utilize the park, the bike trail? Where people gonna, they can't be going through, you know, snow, walk through.
What do you, what do you mean for, well, they would park, we'd have to.
Right.
But how are you going to walk through the light displays?
Yep.
We'd have the snow blow it.
Yeah.
On the grass, is that what you said?
Yep. This was all walking on gravel and through grass.
Yeah, it was all of the above.
Can we incorporate Main Street at all? I think that would be.
I don't know how we could, but I mean, anything's possible. Here's what I get, and I got it all this year. I kept hearing it, whether it was email, Facebook Messenger, social media, it didn't matter how they reached out to me, but they felt like Ixani didn't have Christmas spirit. It used to, but not anymore. And I'm not a bah humbugger. I love Christmas, my kid, I love seeing my kids, you know, get all excited. I like to see any kid get excited at that matter for Christmas or Santa Claus.
If you look at, and if you look at the bottom half of what she's got written on there, that was another idea I brought up to her. I seen it in Rockford, Rockport, whatever it was. And they had Christmas trees all along this park and the people went and decorated and put the lights on the trees. And then they made, it was like memorial to somebody or it was a, and then, you know, you could do whoever decorates their house the best. You could even incorporate Halloween with that, you know, you did, and you get, and you register with the city and.
Of course he wants to put Halloween in there because have you seen his house on Halloween?
Yeah.
Well, even Thanksgiving, he seems to have a big turkey he puts out there.
Yep. I usually do it for Christmas, I just didn't get time this year, but, I mean, I would, I'd have to, couldn't be a part of that, but, you know, since I'm on the council. But, you know, the mayor used to have the great yard award, Mayor Wimmerd. This could take its place where then is giving everybody the opportunity. You know, if you want to decorate for Christmas, you want to decorate for Halloween, you want to decorate for whatever season, you know, you got first, second, and third place, you know? And I think that that, you know, that's bringing to the people, to the, to the community to come through here. I already talked to him about getting on the lane, Trevor, because he's into electronics and I want to do my, there was a couple houses we went to this year where they, you turn in your radios to your car to a certain station and the lights play to the music and blink and I, I'm, that's what I want to do next year. And I, and I got to start on it now.
You'll find somebody text that.
That's.
He did.
He did, so.
Yeah, he called me and.
Yep, so, I mean, it's, it's, Bluebird Park is our, is our crown jewel parks. And you look at it, it's got a ball field in it and some playground.
Soccer field.
Soccer fields and next to it and, you know, now we got the sledding hill in there.
We're adding to it.
We're adding to it.
And it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, but right now there's, it's kind of stale. So, I mean, I, I see what Councilman Lundin's doing here. He's trying to add more and more and more and more to it. I, you know, it's, it's a, and, and, and I see the outcry on social media that the community wants, so.
Where's the cost? Oh, go ahead.
As you say, it's a good idea to add in home decorating too. I think that's, I think.
I think that'd be a good idea, but I don't, I don't want to call it like the mayor's award. I'd, I'd call it the council's award, you know, we're doing it as a team. We're going to vote on it as a team, so I shouldn't, I don't want to just single out myself. I think we should be the one to vote. There's five of us here and if he wants Steve's house and he wants Jimmy's house, well, there's, we're going to vote, so never, you know what I mean? Well, it's three to two, Jimmy wins, you know what I mean?
Congratulations to Jimmy.
So ten to fifteen thousand dollars, five hundred to a thousand dollars per outlet. Where's the ten or fifteen thousand, is that including the outlets or is that just money we, what would, what would we spend that on? If we're going to get stuff for free for displays and we're going to have, you know, I know when I was living out in North Dakota that in Williston they had all the businesses would put up their own display and it wasn't necessarily to do with that business, but it was sponsored by that business and, you know, that kind of thing, so.
And that's what I mean.
Where's that cost coming from? I mean, can we do it cheaper than that or, and, or, you know?
I can speak on that. So the cost for the outlet is separate then, what is that, ten to fifteen thousand? The ten to fifteen thousand is if you want the city to purchase displays to have something to start off with. I mean, yes, we would ask for maybe business support or Rotary Club or what have you, but at a minimum, that's kind of the minimum, otherwise you just have a couple chintzy one here, one there to make a display. But we do have a handicap in Bluebird Park with outlets, so we would need to get some additional outlets. I think that Matt, you recommended like six outlets and they're five hundred to thousand dollars per outlet, depending on the location where we're drawing that power because we got trench and new lines.
But then that's a one-time charge, it's not something we have to do. I mean, that's a, that's, that's a one-time shot. And then these lights, like he said, we work with Bentleyville and he's, every two years he's rotating out his lights and his stands and everything else. He's even talked to metal coatings in Ixani and they would even make damn frames, frames for us. So, I mean, we, we have a lot of revenue, a lot of chance to do things here. It's Sam's Christmas Village, they took corn cribs and they wrapped blanket of light around them and on the roof.
And called it a day.
And called it a day, and they did a nice job of it.
And it was beautiful, I thought.
Then they took some that made dog kennels and they did it, made it look like, you know, they took dog panels, dog kennel panels and sprung the lights on it and made it look like Christmas boxes. I mean, it was, it was, it was done.
Tastefully.
Very tastefully. I, I have to admit, ooh ah's and ooh ah's, I'd have to say what I went through on this thing, it was very nice.
I think, I think it was my wife ooh ah and I realized, that's a dog kennel.
Yep.
And then she'd ooh ah and I'd be like, that's a corn crib. You know what I mean? It was, it's kind of how you went through it, but it was pretty tasteful. It was pretty, I was shocked at how they put these things together. It was, it was crazy, it was cool. And people were, what did it cost us? Twelve bucks for an adult, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, and then it was like what? Fifteen bucks to park or ten bucks to park or something?
Ten bucks, ten bucks to park, fif, twelve for an adult and ten, was it ten? What was your kids', do you recall?
Oh, yeah, my husband went up and paid, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, and I paid and I don't even remember.
All I know is I gave my wife a hundred dollar bill and I didn't get any change and there was only four of us.
Well, that's, that's normal for you.
That's par for the course.
Yeah. But it, it was done very tastefully and I think, and like Bentleyville, they charge, it's nothing to go through the lights, it's parking. And the city actually collects the parking fees. So, because it's their park.
And then they put donation boxes on top of it.
Donation boxes on top, and there was people shoving bills and those things like there was no tomorrow. And I mean, you couldn't go from here to that doorway without running into a donation box. And there was stuff and money in them too, so.
I think if you build it, they're going to come. And I mean, we're coming from Ixani and potentially you're, I always forget what township you're in, Josie, but you're coming from your area, going to Wisconsin. I came from Ixani to Wisconsin, so did he, I mean.
And even driving to Duluth.
Yeah, even going to Duluth. I mean, it's, people come from all different areas.
I drove down to Ham Lake. My wife found this thing on Facebook where this guy did that turning radio station to it. She went down there and liked it, so she dragged me down there and, I mean, it was, okay, cool.
A business in Cambridge did it.
And then a business in Cambridge at the, the old laundromat by the railroad tracks.
Yeah. And of course, my wife dragged me to that one.
So, I mean, it's, 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 people are, people are coming into the community to see these things. And I think it's, it's, you know, it's a start. Like I said, I don't think we need to go spill, build the Taj Mahal Bentleyville or Sam's Christmas Village this year, but I think we need to start someplace and every year we could maybe allocate a little more money. We start maybe getting some of this stuff from the guy up in Bentleyville.
Donations.
Donations. And I think, you know, the hotel especially, if, if you get people coming up from Iowa to go to Duluth and they find out about Ixani and the guy in Bentleyville said he'd work with us because it would work hand in hand. They come here.
I made the joke of, you, you, you sell Ixani, I'll sell Bentleyville, not that you really need it, but. And he was like, heck, yeah. I mean, I was just joking and he was like, heck, yeah, I'd do that.
So mayor and council, when would we, or Councilmember Lundin maybe more applicable, when would we want this potentially to start? Looking for what year?
I would say it'd be great to start it this year, get it done this year for Christmas.
Is a direction for Mr. Becker to look into funding sources for this and bring back for further discussion?
Do we know when Bentley, Bentleyville is willing to donate, you said every other year? Will this next year be the every?
I'd have to call and ask.
He'd have to call him and ask him again, but I remember him saying he was having a heck of a time getting ahold of him to start with. That guy starts, he's starting right now for next year already.
Oh, I don't doubt that.
Well, I do think, mayor and council, I do think that we're early enough that we could take maybe a month to research funding, funding potential sources. Maybe the mayor can reach out to Bentleyville, perhaps reach out to Rotary, Lions, VFW Legion in the area and see what kind of participation. I, Princeton did one this year that was new and that was primarily from their VFW and it was all volunteers put together and businesses sponsored to help out. And I do think we're early enough in the game to make that happen this year, but we would want to get started right away to see what avenues we could explore and potentially what costs.
See, we could, we could even roll this thing in and when we did this, we could do, Cambridge used to have the Swedish Festival Parade. And then they also had this snow.
Snowflake.
Snowflake Parade.
I think they still have that, don't they?
I don't think so. I know the Swedish Festival is gone.
They may not have because of COVID, but they did last year.
Was it canceled? But I know Swedish Festival disappeared and that used to be a big thing, you know?
I guess my question, I got, I like the idea of a few things that, that I'd like answers to are, well, for one, it's going to have to be ADA, so you're going to have to do it along the bike trail or something. People in wheelchairs can enjoy it. You're not going to be able to get a wheelchair through the grass and, it's crazy, so, something to think about. And then the fixtures, storage, and employees to work the event.
Those are all done in donations. All volunteers, Lions, Boy Scouts, whatever. Because I think at Bentleyville, I think every week they had a different, different organization.
It's all volunteers for them.
All volunteers that diff, every other, every week they had somebody different volunteering to do.
If I recall right, he told me his payroll consisted of three people? It's two or three. Him being included in, in one of those, but he chuckled as he said, I pay myself peanuts. But it wasn't very many that they paid, otherwise it was all volunteer. He said fifty to a hundred volunteers. He made the same comment, you build it, they'll come. And that's why he said, yeah, and that, that's when I made the joke of, well, you sell Ixani, I'll sell Bentleyville, not that you need it. And he chuckled and said, heck, yeah, I'm in.
It's tough to get volunteers.
I don't want the city to really be in any kind of business.
I don't think.
Even though this would be a fun one to be in, but.
I don't think we should charge for it if it's something we do.
Well, they're thinking.
It's not a business.
Parking, yeah, right, but I mean, I'm, it is a business in the sense that we're.
Just going through Park and Rec.
We're going to charge for parking and stuff like that. Well, yeah, you can do a park rec, you know?
It's not going through the city council.
I like the idea of volunteers that, that come in and, you know, make, make their cut of the parking fee or something like that for that week. But I mean, do you really need volunteers? I mean, how many volunteers are you going to have for, for something like that?
We're going to have volunteers to make sure parking goes okay. You're going to have to have volunteers to.
Hot chocolate and.
You know, you'd have, besides that, you'd have to have volunteers that, you know, just walk through and make sure people ain't unplugging your lights or wrecking stuff.
Yeah.
And then how do you secure it on the nights?
Same way they do with all these.
Hot chocolate and stuff can be banded out. I mean, you'll have people bring in their food trucks.
What do you mean hot, same, what, how do they?
They don't, there's no gates on any of it.
They never had any vandalizing?
You, do we have any vandalizing? No?
I mean, they're, they had volunteers.
So they ain't going to stop anything, they ain't going to change anything.
And, and they had volunteers that would sit overnight watching it.
Sit overnight, yeah.
I don't know, I'd like to see the community do something like this. I mean, I think we could encourage that some.
Absolutely, that's why we're getting them involved.
But yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to see the city continue to spend more money on this and make it bigger and better and, you know, I mean, if the community gets together and a group wants to do it, I mean, I, I like the idea of that more than, than the city kind of funding this from the ground up, you know what I mean?
But the problem is it's on city property that has, it's being done on.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can allow for things to be done on city property, like we rent out the gazebo and stuff. I mean, we can, we could allow for that, but, I don't know.
I think that's a good point. People do, people do rent out the park or go to the Park and Rec border and say, we want to use the park.
Yeah, right.
Right here.
Right, so we could allow a private group to do that.
Councilmember Eric Gordon, I think that we would just be in agreement. I would imagine that that's what Princeton had with the VFW because it is their campground area in their city park, Riverside City Park, that they permitted it.
Okay. Before shooting it down, I'd like to lay out the options of, you know, seeing what the numbers are.
Maybe the city donates, you know, an initial, you know, maybe we put in the wiring for it and we kind of, you know, we talk to some folks in town and, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure how we could go about it, but I mean, maybe the city puts the, the stuff that we would need to get it done and we kind of encourage it maybe a little bit and, you know, maybe we have the original donation of five thousand dollars to go towards some, some stuff and then somebody else takes it and kind of runs with it, but, but to have it be kind of an ongoing thing where we're always having to fund it and, and look for making it bigger and better, I just don't want to continue to do that.
I don't think we'd be funding it, though, it'd be all donations, it would be all.
I think, I think we should first have Mr. Becker look at, we got time to discuss that, but, I mean, we got a lot to go through yet before our council. I don't, and I, I hear you, Jimmy, but I think at this point, it isn't going to cost us anything to have him look into financing for it. And I think, you know, by the next call meeting or next couple down the road, where, you know, Mr. Johnson gets some stuff together again. I, I don't want to step on his toes, he's done a lot, I, I mean, he's done a lot on it. It was my idea, he rolled with it and he went and did all the, all the legwork. So I don't want to step on who his contacts were and who he's talked to and that's definitely, and that, and I think.
Somebody did, but it wasn't him.
Yep.
Okay. So the next item for discussion is Veterans Memorial on or near Bluebird Park or Amphitheater. Is it something that council would like to explore?
I think most communities have one.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, I think it's only fitting to give back to our veterans that gave up so much.
Doesn't the VFW have something already? They don't?
If they got a tank out there, I'm sure they got a memorial.
That's it, they got a tank out there in the Howard Center.
In the Howard Center, yep.
Yeah, but is, and is there like a plaque out there or anything like that?
Mm-mm. Mm-mm. Nope.
And I'm sure we have I see any residents that are veterans, you know?
Oh, yeah. How much is a veterans memorial gonna cost?
Depends on what you put into it.
Yeah. Cambridge just completed one. I saw the numbers. I can't remember exactly what it was, but.
I believe that they had a lot of volunteer and assistance from, was that their VFW or Legion or? There was an organization that headed it.
There'd be a Legion up there. They don't have a VFW up in Cambridge. We have the VFW here.
Yeah.
Maybe we should approach the Legion and or VFW and see what they want out there.
Maybe we should just talk to them.
There we go.
That's what I mean by that, yeah.
I agree. Since you're talking to them about the.
Ask Cambridge how much their, what cost they put into it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we talk to our.
If anybody wants to look.
Well, I mean, talk to our VFW, but also talk to Cambridge and.
If anybody wants to look at theirs, it's right across from the old library.
I seen it. Many times.
Was that that park right there?
It was, if I remember right, it was six figures.
Pretty nice. I like it.
It was six figures, I think.
I think you're right. I think that's crazy, but.
Of city dollars or of volunteer dollars?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Where, how that was all broke down and you know, but cost wise.
It'd be crazy if it was.
Then that was the lot.
It'd be crazy if it was city dollars.
Well, yeah.
That didn't include real estate. That was donated.
I believe Malacca put in.
Their tax dollars.
Give me six figures.
I think Malacca put in a very nice new veterans memorial. It's really beautiful and I believe that they had gotten a. Uh, don't quote me, but I think it was a donation, private donation for like ninety thousand or something. They put it on city property, but. They had someone approach the city to put trails in and I think another individual to do a veterans memorial.
Didn't, didn't Ms. Brooks talk to somebody from beyond the blue line? There was something, you and I talked about something a while back. I wonder if they, wouldn't be an organization we can reach up, excuse me, reach out to and see if there's something that they'd be willing to. Step in with donations towards something like that.
For law enforcement?
No.
No, it was, it was behind the yellow ribbon or she talked, it was something we discussed.
Blue line.
Yeah, I said blue line, but I, but I, that's what I meant.
And I, I have contacts with those people and VFW pages and shop or store and so some of those guys I can talk to.
I think any and all hands, you know, to reach out and see. Who or what could help is not a bad idea.
All right, we will bring that forward with more information. Next one is consideration of lighting and a snowmaking machine at the sledding hill. So if you've been out there at nighttime, you know that it's dark. You know that there are times where there may not be snow. Uh, is there any, any interest in having either of both of those two things?
We scrambled on that.
Definitely light.
On that ribbon cutting thing and.
There is nothing you can do about.
Yeah, I don't think snow machine.
What do you mean?
Matt did.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
That's probably.
That was a lot of work.
What Public Works did do for the grand opening was great and grand. However, it's not um, cost effective or efficient for the Public Works staff to continue to do that. Um, cost approximately for a snow machine and they would just pull water off a hydrant or give or take around a thousand. Uh, depending on the model that you choose, we obviously would need one that's, you know, safety. Has safety stuff to it. Um, cost for lighting is quite more. Uh, there are some options through Conexus Energy to put some light poles up, um, two kind of on the side or one in the center. Um, we also staff reached out to our city electrician about moving one of our big, large lights from what used to be our um, hockey arena over. All the costs are approximately five thousand dollars. Best option that staff that would be, give the most lighting, most efficient. Um, for what we're looking to do would be the two poles with Conexus.
I was thinking headlights for cars.
Park the cars.
Yeah, park the cars during headlights on.
Is there not, is there not a flag pole out there with the light on that? How close is that to the hill?
There's a flag pole with a, with a lower light to illuminate the flag. That's it. But it's not an actual light pole. There is a street light pole across the street of Thorne.
Okay, that's not good.
But not on, not on the hillside.
After that grand opening, I stayed there until it got dark and then you can't see nothing.
No. And when it gets dark at four thirty for a long stretch, it's.
And all them kids all years, oh, when you tell them they gotta go home, it's too dark.
So you said, you said even running those hockey lights out there would be five, five thousand as well?
Correct.
Okay. So the hockey program has no, I mean, I know it's COVID and we don't have an arena. I don't, do we have a?
We don't have a hockey rink anymore.
We don't have a hockey rink anymore. So those lights just, um, the lights do come on during the summertime for skate park. Um, during park hours, but otherwise they are not utilized, but. The cost to take them down and we had looked at the cost, um, when we were considering moving, um, the pleasure rink over closer to the BMX. Bathrooms area. And again, it was really cost prohibitive to move those lights versus just getting a new Conexus light put up. And this is perhaps not something that you may want to not do this year, but maybe want to give direction to staff to include this and figure out how it could fit into our CIP. And myself and Mr. Becker could work on that and bring that back.
How much was the lights reaching out to Conexus?
Five thousand, give or take.
Okay.
Well, eventually that's where the gazebo is gonna go. I, you know, is the gazebo gonna go to the bottom of the hill or where's that gonna go?
I think it was in the north.
Gazebo's already there.
No.
Or whatever we're calling it.
The amphitheater.
Oh, amphitheater.
Okay, amphitheater, sorry.
That was in the north.
It's actually to the bottom of the hill, but still set back actually south of the hill.
I wonder if that could be built into that just because you're gonna need lighting for that. I mean.
We would want lighting for that. Likely for safety.
I agree with Councilman Burgley. It would be kind of a good idea to implement both. I mean, the ones on the side would be good, but could you utilize that in the amphitheater if we needed it?
Well, if you're.
Mr. Cook, do you think that that perhaps would be close enough to hit those two things?
For the grass seating?
Yeah, actually, Matt and I kind of touched on that exact idea. I kind of had the same thought when we were talking about it earlier and uh. I don't think for the proximity of where we would talk about putting the amphitheater, so it's out of the way of the sledders and things. That the way those direct light, that would quite be enough luminosity to really light it up, but. Maybe doing it at the same time would still make sense so that it could be at least wired and installed with, you know.
There's nothing like.
I always thought we were gonna use the amphitheater as a backstop for the sledders.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, there's nothing like running into an amphitheater while you're sitting there.
I mean, there's, there's a chance people sit on that hill in the summertime for the concerts in the park.
Right, and that was part of that. So if that hill was. How close can we get it without being too close to have a?
Right, if that hill is lit during summer too. And then they can use it for jumps on the sledding hill.
Yeah.
Let's not go there. That's all I see on social media is all the people breaking their arms on Cambridge sledding hill. I don't want to start that here.
So Mayor Council, do we want to consider, um, bringing back costs for the lights? Um, when we discuss further about the amphitheater since that needs to still yet come back to council?
I think so.
I agree.
And Matt, I guess, what's your opinion on the snow machine?
I think that the only way you can guarantee to have snow all the time on a sledding hill is with a snowmaking machine. It's just, it's just only, it's always gonna be there.
Yeah.
But then even then you make snow and it's facing south and the sun. It's gonna melt. You gotta make more snow and then if the weather isn't cold enough, you can't make snow. So at that point, we don't have any snow anyway.
You can make the snow even in the, I mean, when it's warmer than you think. I mean.
Yeah, but if you, do you drive by the ski hills that make snow? I do every day.
I ski on them.
I drive by them every day and I know when they're making snow and they're not making snow every day.
Well, yeah, they are.
The other one, huh?
They're running.
Wild Mountain starts in November. They start in November.
Yeah, I've been skiing when it's sixty degrees though because they were making snow.
I skied when it was sixty degrees in California. But it also got a blizzard within five minutes.
Yeah, that was also in nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah.
I wasn't alive in eighty-seven.
You can make snow when it's, when it's fairly warm, but. Bad thing with that is you gotta continue and continue.
I don't think weighing the cost of anything and bringing it back for discussion is a bad idea. Then we could, yeah, that costs too much money. Let's not do that, you know? I think if we had exact figures. On a lot of things, we'd know if. It would be a yay or a nay.
What was the cost on the storm machine? I know you looked into it.
So that was a grand, eighty-six thousand?
When you just hook up a hose to the hydrant, so your hydrant goes by?
Yeah, right behind the hill.
Basically, what the snowmake machine consists of is a, a pressure washer, um, air with it and then water, water source. And basically it takes the. Pressure washer and the high volume of air and it runs it through a nozzle and it just sprays out the little droplets, then freezes in the air and therefore you have snow. And from what I read, you can do it just under freezing. You can make snow.
Why can't you get Scott McGyver over there to just build one?
Do that, do that in your spare time, Matt.
All right, let's move on then.
Uh, the next one will be good to discuss now where we have Mr. Cook here. And then after this item, perhaps, uh, Mayor and Council, we may want to postpone the remaining three items till after planning commission to finish this evening. Uh, but the next item is to discuss speed limits for being reduced to twenty miles per hour in developments.
Chief, you think that's gonna justify anything?
Justify as far as.
We lower into twenty miles an hour. You think they're really gonna do twenty?
That some of them are already only doing twenty. That's, you know, I, we had that data came back about a year ago. I mean, it wasn't our scientific data. We talked to Mr. Cook, but. Majority of our speeds on the roads we found were below thirty already.
That's what my thought was, was boy, that's twenty, on some of those roads, twenty is too fast. So I mean, are you gonna really increase some people's speed by going to twenty?
Like if you recall, I mean.
Right now it's thirty.
We did a random.
Yeah, but people do twenty. I do twenty-five going through town.
But I mean, if you changed it to twenty, you probably would have to post it, right?
Yeah.
Well, a lot, most of the streets aren't even posted what, what it is anyway.
Right. So if I just chime in, I guess on that note, so if we follow what the state statute is, thirty, you don't have to post anything. It's just, that's what you get to assume. You don't have to bother with posting. That new rule that came to be of two years ago now, um, made it where the city can. Go to twenty-five mile an hour, just more or less just by passing, you know, a resolution, um, for residential streets. That are less than a half a mile and aren't collector or arterial. So. A select number of streets and whichever ones those are, we could do it without really anything beyond us, you know, choosing to. But then you have to post those individually and post when they end or, you know, when you've left it again. And so it'd be a whole lot of signs for very randomized streets. The other thing that got changed the two years ago was to be able to go lower to twenty or, you know, which is what's here. Uh, but with twenty, it still is, you basically have to have a study done to validate the reasoning. You can do it for a citywide system and adopt that as this is how we're gonna proceed based on these findings. But you still have to do this reasonably larger study. With that said, there's still like an ongoing study that's kind of being done, that may be finishing this year. That's gonna have some more guidance on limiting how much actual evaluation you need to do to be able to apply it to more streets. Than, than those certain ones. Um, but right now, if you wanted to go to that twenty, it'd really be. Recommended to do kind of that. Study, whether it'd be a blanket study, so we're kind of addressing all streets and then you could post them just as you're going in or out of an entire development. As opposed to individual streets, but.
What if, what are we gonna do though if that studies shows we should be doing forty?
So, uh, fair enough, but you don't have to, so when it's a study and you're not using the state to do the evaluation and.
Aha.
And the commissioner to decide more or less for us what it's gonna be, we can do the study and then find. Yeah, it's not really recommended to lower it because the average driver is already going at the speed we want to post it at and it's not necessary. We can just not do anything. But, um, at this point, you know, it's a reasonably extensive study to be able to kind of. Have that supporting documentation to go to it, but you know, it's, it's up to you guys if you want to go that way.
I go back to, where are we gonna buy those signs that flash what your speed limit was? Were we, I mean, I'm not sure what happened there. Was that on next year's, this year's budget or?
I, I guess I don't.
Chief, did you ever look into that?
I think the ones we're looking at are eighteen twenty-five and thirty-three hundred apiece, depending on what you want to do with them. I do know they work.
I know they work.
Yeah, what, what do you think, chief, of all this discussion?
Well, I, I think our biggest issues we have is traffic complaints in neighborhoods. I mean, I'm sure all of you have gotten those, whether it's a stop sign issue or a speeding issue or whatever issue. However, those are the outliers of isolated incidents versus the everyday normal behavior of traffic that we've seen. You know, I mean, with even what we looked at for speed, um, that was about last year, the number of outliers, I mean, don't get me wrong, there are people that drive like. Not smart people through town. We try to find them, but I think those overwhelm. Your everyday traffic. So your one percenters is what is getting a lot of complaints and whatnot. Uh, we're still looking for the one percenters too. So I think overall, overall, there's not a huge. Traffic issue as far as everybody's speed. Not everybody, you have your percentages that are. Uh, but the majority of what we seen was majority of the traffic. I want to, I'll uh, probably get that out to Josie. She can put out in the next admin update as far as last year's. What we came up with numbers, actually give you the data that we came up with. That was just random spots throughout the. City at like thirty-minute intervals and logging all the traffic speeds that were coming by.
I think that'd be something good we should look at before pulling the trigger on something like that anyway. So let's uh, let's postpone this until after planning. Cause we have to shift gears in the city council here.
Motion to adjourn then or motion to?
Motion, motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Till after planning commission by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, therefore we are postponed on goal settings.